Heads of legions, the United States of America, to the people for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I don't know if I can make it. Okay, first, we're business to get copies of the minutes from the previous meeting on 8:15 to 9:05.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for 8:15 to 9:05.
Second.
On paper.
Aye.
Claims and warrants. End of month, August 2024, $328,737.56. And for next meeting, $249,220.12. And we've got payroll warrants for 8:22, 8:29, 9:05, 9:12, 9:19, in the amount of $44,756.37. And we got the bank reconciliation for the end of the month of August. Utilities, $2,705,320.48. The town, $804,241.82. Payroll, $2,703.45. And customer deposits, $37,225.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims and warrants and the big payroll.
Second.
I beg.
All right. Second?
Yep.
On paper.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've gotten different ones. Nice to hear. Last three months. Such a test.
Yeah, I'm about here this morning, and I had a new line on there, and they're about to start this idea.
It's pretty random, no problem.
Yeah. Yeah, one billing adjustment at $270.79.
Make a motion for the one billing adjustment.
I'll second that.
On paper. Thank you.
Yep. She made the motion, I second it. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Pepperstone.
No, I tell you, it didn't realize. You know, I'm good for that, but. Tonight's the night of the 2025 closed budget hearing. Any comments, questions?
For me.
So, the meeting on October 3rd, we will adopt that budget. In impact, there's a quote from M&amp;B Music and Sound. And that is for the video system. For to record our meeting and so forth. And that is 5350. See, all this stuff in there, and then the terms. The extra optional, the total cost of the second camera, is that?
I guess, yeah.
Is that necessary, you think, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't normally weigh in on these things, but I was telling Kathy. There's a, I go to a lot of meetings, and I have a couple clients who use a device called an Owl. Ever heard of the Owl? It's not, it's about twice the size of this thing. Cindy, you've seen it?
I've got one.
You got one? It costs about a thousand bucks, but.
We got a faux Owl for like four hundred.
Okay. And you'd need probably like a little laptop to kind of, you know, run some stuff. But you're gonna need a laptop probably anyway. And maybe, you know, I think you could probably do, and it does, what it has, it has multiple cameras on it. And so, it can show, like you can put one here in the middle, and it'll have like a room view of the whole room. And then it'll, if I'm talking, it'll have one camera that zooms in on me. And then Cindy starts to talk, it'll zoom in on her. It has a, it has microphones, so it picks up the audio. It has speakers, so you can hear what people say. Now, you know, you get a huge room, and it doesn't work as well. But, I mean, I think if you can put a TV up and connect it to the TV, so anyone who joins can see, you can see them if you wanted. It's a lot less stop just one. And I, I know, do you like yours?
Oh, we love it.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're great.
I didn't know that's what you called it, but I was.
Because I'm looking through.
We've used it before, Jay, the silver.
Foul.
Well, you can pick whatever you want. If you have to get an account with like Google Meet or Teams or Zoom, but then you can record all of your meeting. Now, you'd have to have a place to save all your recordings still, but. You know, most of these things have that capability. And, and anyone can join the meeting, you just have to give them a link to join. And.
So, every month when you advertise the meeting, that link would have to be.
Yeah, the airport uses it, the library. The library uses it, airport uses it.
Or you direct people to Park Without Reverse website, where the link will change every week with your meeting, as long as we work together on it.
Now, how's that? Through Park Without Reverse, you could do that.
Yeah, easily. And that's where they go to watch right now, so.
Yeah.
Scott? Here, I was asking you to quote it in.
Right, you did your part.
The one that, the only, the only thing I don't know how we do in here, and I guess you don't have to do this part, would be connect it to a monitor of some kind, like a, like a big screen. I guess you could just run an HDMI cable, a real long HDMI cable. Because we, like the one the airport uses, it's just on like a, like a TV tray. They just put a TV tray, send it, and for the meeting, plug a laptop into it and.
Where did you get the one you have?
On Amazon.
You've seen it, Dustin?
All right, any office has one. Our tariff office has one.
And it's nice because it's mobile too, so for some reason, you couldn't have the meeting in here.
You can take it wherever you want.
Could you loan them yours for a meeting to see how it works?
Yep, sure could.
Yeah, it's pretty nifty.
You know, I've seen that.
Yeah.
The, Vermillion County has one, and I borrowed it two times for SRF pre-close meeting. And, and worked great. And then we use it for our Economic Development Redevelopment Commission meetings in Vermillion County and stuff, because we always have people joining remotely, and like I said, the airport and the library both use it. You go panel.
So, we'd need to buy a laptop, and then we would need this Owl.
Either one of them has a laptop.
We have an extra laptop that.
If you, I think you should get a, I would suggest getting a TV.
Yeah.
To hang up the mountain here, so that, or people can see, you know, I don't know. You don't have it where to put it exactly, or, you know, if it mounted on the wall or something. But I, I mean, you know, TVs are not expensive anymore. Laptops are not particularly expensive, even mine is.
Walmart's got some on clearance right now.
You're not, you're not gonna wanna go cheap on the laptop with that, with video, HD video streaming. You're not gonna go, I might even go desktop, honestly, and.
Laptops work fine, we don't have any trouble with them.
But, you know, I think you could do it for under $2,000. Now.
Does that come with an IT guy?
I mean, I, 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 I usually, I mean, the Owl thing, I, it's easy. I mean, I plug it in with this laptop, and this lap, I'll tell you, this lap, I mean, this laptop, it was a nice laptop, but it's six, seven years old. And, yeah, you gotta get it, have good internet, but you're gonna have to have good internet to stream your meetings anyway. And it's, I plugged, you know, one cord in here, and another cord back there for the TV. The Owl's just one cord, just one little.
And then a power cord.
Power cord, yeah, power cord. It makes a little hooting sound when you turn it on.
Well, the faux Owl doesn't.
But if you've got one, I mean.
Yeah, we're free to try it, absolutely.
The discount rate, you gotta mute one.
Boots are Chinese.
And it does have the, I mean, if you get things set up too, it does have the ability to mute the room until you're ready for the meeting as well, so. That's, that's also.
Kill switch.
I'm sorry?
Kill switch.
All right, so, so, that's good, Ted. Are you available on the 3rd?
Of October. If I'm not, well, Scott will know how to connect it if you're here, something, it's easy to connect. If I can't be here, but I will try.
Okay. If I need to run over and pick it up, I can do that too.
Yes, I should be able to.
Okay, good.
This is probably nicer, nicer to remove some stuff, to be honest with you, but, but, I mean, I.
Try, try this first.
Ah, yeah, I'm sure it comes with something, I mean, you know, it's, but you could buy a lot of them for what that costs.
Well, we've had hours since COVID, so we've got it in 2020.
One of the quotes I got was $11,000 a year.
Oh, the, the, Vermillion County bought, they have, they got a very elaborate system, and they spent a bunch of money on it. Nobody knows how to run every meeting. It's a, it's a, it's, there's six people hovering around a computer trying to figure out how to do anything. And, and it's, it's, this thing, that's what I like about it, it's so simple, just point, okay, we're ready. And, and it works, you know, very, very good. Not, you know, they have this wired up, so everybody has a micro, the county has everything, everybody has a microphone in front of them. In theory, it's supposed to, and so I'm sure it's probably better when it works right, but.
Kathy, if you'll bring your extra laptop, that way we can make sure it works on that as well.
You gotta have the right, you know, if you don't have an HDMI, or you don't.
Since we're just, so try running this, I don't have to advertise it, or?
No, we can just, they just play with it at meetings and see how it works.
Then we'd have to have an account set up prior to.
I've got one.
You've got one, yeah.
Remember, next month, on the 3rd, we have the budget adoption at the regular time. And on the 10th, we have a 5:00 PM meeting for the bid opening for the water treatment facility. And then on the 17th, we got the, we don't have one on the 17th, it's moved to the 24th at 6:00 PM due to the bridge festival, so. Don't forget those. Got that?
Got it, it's in my calendar.
Are you gonna be here?
I should be here on the 3rd, yeah. And the 10th, and the 24th.
Dustin, you wanna?
Yep. And then I would just add to that, I guess, is we have a pre-bid meeting scheduled for October 1st, here at 10:00 AM. You guys don't have to come, you're more than welcome to come, but you don't have to attend by any means. The contractors can come, we'll be here, they'll, we'll go over all the requirements of the project. Anything in particular that they need to be involved with funding wise, there's, we've got the BABA stuff we've got to talk about. They can ask questions, they can go visit the site, there's not a lot to see out there, but they can go visit the site. Just gives contractors a chance to ask questions in person. And that's the first. Projects out for bids, we have got a couple contractors interested. Grace Construction out of Swiss City is interested. Thoneman out of Mary, I'm gonna say it wrong, Mary, Maryville.
Maryville.
Every state of North. They've got an office in Indianapolis, and then Haverson North, fourth? I don't even know how you say that, I've never heard of them. I've got a couple contractors that picked up plans. Foyt's Construction won't bid, they picked up plans. MSI out of Clinton's picked up plans, they probably won't bid, it's probably a little bit too big for them. But they might team up with somebody to do, they could be, they'd be great to build the building itself, but the mechanical type work is a little above their pay grade, I think. All the equipment suppliers picked up plans, there's a lot of interest, it looks like. Hopefully, bids come in in a good direction. They're running a little high right now, I've heard about Clinton and some projects there, but. Pretty confident in the estimate, but we do have one thing, several forms that need signed here. This is the application for construction design release, it's for this building itself, with the State of Indiana Homeland Security. Our engineers working on it have all signed. So, each engineer X marks a spot that they're certifying with the State of Indiana, so we have site structural, several different ones here, just need your signature on there somewhere.
Scott, do we need a motion on this, or just?
Probably just for the record, in case.
So, make a motion for the application for the construction design release.
I'll second. On paper?
Yeah.
All right.
We'll get everything submitted with them tomorrow. We do have to submit, we'll submit a variance along with this. It's a request of variance, they require sprinklers in the chlorine room. We're gonna ask for a variance to not have to sprinkler a, I mean, the chlorine room's gonna be eight by eight. Putting sprinklers in there would cost a couple hundred thousand dollars for, chlorine's not flammable anyway, so. Putting sprinklers in there doesn't do any good. It's a locked room with some chemical feed pumps, or not even a feed pump, it's got the regulator on it, so. Nothing, it can't even catch fire. I don't know why they, they just don't have a carve-out for us, you have to request a variance from the code.
Are these all the same thing?
They're all the same, they're just each.
Application for design release?
It's all the same, it's part of the same submittal, it's just multiple forms for different engineers' specialties. Does anybody have any questions about the project while he's finishing up?
We, we will also have some preliminary rate and bond ordinances for you to vote on the October 3rd meeting. Normally, we'd like to do those after we open bids, but we're not timeline.
And that one, and have a signature, that's just the second last thing.
So, what you see in that is gonna be hopefully a lot higher than what you end up having to adopt. We can, we can do the preliminary high and then narrow it once we open bids. But given the bids on these other projects, Kim and I will probably shoot pretty high with that, some of that stuff. So, I'll talk to the, I've talked to Dustin about it before meeting, and I'll talk to the financial and rate people about that. So that, you know, we probably ought to, is if we, the problem is if the rate does, if we just use the engineers' estimates, and we do it based on that, and the bids come in 5% higher, then our rate will not be enough. And we'll have to go back, and doing a rate takes two meetings with so many days in between. So, it really would throw things into, into a bit of a mess for the timeline.
That's all I can, I just gave you an update, since contractors probably won't call you, but if they do, you can always tell them to call us, you can't answer questions they don't want, but you don't have to, you can just tell them to answer questions.
Thank you. Cindy?
Um, just have a few more things. I know you guys are being inundated with all of these grants and whatnots. But I just brought hopefully some more just milestone pieces for the OCRE grants. And I also brought a copy, Jay, of the form that I had asked you to sign for the Buy America, Build America stuff that you and Dustin had to sign. So, I'm giving Kathy a copy of that, just so she can keep it in the grant file. So, that's, I'm sure you've heard us talk about, you know, certain metals that are being used in the construction. But I wanted to share just a few key dates and kind of where we are on this. What I'm passing out is just a screenshot on the online grant system and the per OCRE that has some key dates for you. And I know Scott's been through this a million times, so I didn't bring you a copy, Scott.
It's fine. No offense.
So, the dates that you see on the left-hand side, those are set by OCRE, so that's kind of what we have to target to hit. So, things like FEIBs, environmental, things like that is what this is about. So, to kind of connect it, on the right-hand side are the dates that we complete these items. And drew nice little lines to connect hopefully the area, so that makes sense. The FEIBs due date, so that's a nice acronym for Finance, Environmental Engineering, and Permits, Site Control, all of that. We have that turned in, what we needed on that. The next one is the Environmental Review Deadline, or Environmental Review Record. That record is at Kathy's office. We've advertised, which we're required to do, if anybody wants to come in and review any of the environmental pieces. They have until the 26th of September to provide any comments for local, because we also did a release of funds in that advertisement as well. So, that's moving along, so on the 27th of this month, I'll be able to indicate, we've waited that period, supply any comments if we receive any, and let them know. Our bid deadline is February of '25. Dustin's already got that under control, so we'll be well in front of that target. The ROF is Release of Funds. And we'll be able to request that pretty shortly after the bids are awarded. And I made a note on that Release of Funds on the right-hand side, within that is like construction release. So, basically, what my role is then to verify the contractor selected, and make sure nobody's doing bad things. Have all of the contracts in place for whoever you select, as well as engineering and grant admin has to all be included in any contract at that point. Then we'll request notice to proceed construction, so once we get that, they'll tell us, move ahead. And then we'll be able to, if we have any billings come in after that, we get that Release of Funds that I can work with Kathy to submit. So, those are just the key dates, key milestones, we're all in really good shape of hitting all of those. And that was really the big, big things I just wanted to share with you. So, if I come in to give an update, and I talk about environmental reviews, or construction release, and things like that, at least you have something that hopefully makes a little bit of sense for you. Any questions? Scott, you look like you have a question, do you, something?
No, I'm just, you know, just trying to think about all these, all these moving parts that you're, we're trying to.
Yeah.
This deadline, and, and we have OCRE and SRF together, it's not unusual, but it complicates.
Complex.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, I mean, this luckily can move, you know, in parallel with, with SRF, so we're not necessarily at this point dependent on one to do one before the other. We just keep moving ahead and hopefully meet at some point for us. Really. The other thing too, that Scott and I chatted, and I don't know if you guys need to discuss this or not, but I had intended to send over my contract for the grant administration, which is typical for the OCRE. Part of that includes not just the administration of the grant, but OCRE also has a labor standards and the environmental review we talked about, which are kind of billed separate from the administration part. SRF also requires labor standards review as well, so it really just about duplicates what I'm doing with Ogra. So Scott and I were chatting, it just kind of makes sense if you want me to continue to do the labor standards for the SRF portion as well. I'll just amend the contract that I would normally use to include that, so that you're all covered. And it's just a few extra forms really that I would complete for SRF.
Only makes sense.
Yeah, having two people do it would be so confusing.
Right.
Get contractors.
The contractors would not like us. But, so I'll make, I'll make that adjustment and then actually send it with the attachment this time. This government, I didn't, I did not attach the form, which kind of worked out well anyway, so. Alright. That's all I got.
Joanna?
Do you want me to go next?
Okay, thanks. Cindy and Mike Askin have been staining the pavilion at the south end of Reader Park. It's almost done and it looks real nice, what they have finished, what they have completed. The lines on the tennis courts have been painted for pickleball. And we met last Saturday with a couple of different folks who have been playing pickleball. They had contacted us through Facebook and then one, Brandy Thomas, came to the meeting last time and requested that it be completed, cleaned up and repainted. And after the meeting that we had previously, and you had said that it would be after the first of the year and possibly even the tennis courts wouldn't be affected, then with the project, we went ahead and did that. We have the paint purchased for the nitro ball lines and tennis lines, but we haven't had a chance to get back up there and repaint, because we've been dealing with Paul's brother. But that's progress anyway, in the light of everything. Also, we're getting ready for pranks in the park, we've been, that's ongoing. And I'd like to ask about the restroom keys for the bathrooms at Reader Park. I know that we've been over this before and whenever somebody comes to camp, you know, one of the guys from the utility department has to be called in and they have to come down and unlock the bathrooms for the campers, register them and what have you. And I realize there's a bonding issue as far as acceptance of money, but it is silly when there's five of us that live within three or four blocks of that park for us to have to pay these guys overtime to come and collect fifty dollars or whatever small fee it may be, which doesn't cover the on-call, and we are more than willing to do that. We can take turns, we'd be happy to do that. The day that they had the kayak race, nobody knew that they were supposed to come and, and do that. So I got ahold of Cody after contacting Brad and the other Brad, and he came and unlocked, well, I guess John ended up unlocking it, didn't you?
Yeah.
For them.
I think the problem there was is they never asked for it and we just dropped the ball on thinking that they would need it. So we didn't pay them for it.
So I made sure for the 5K that's about to happen, that they got, did they come to you?
Yeah, he come in, he's gonna come get the key the Friday before.
Okay, good, so I made sure that they knew they could reserve the park, because there were other people who used the park and maybe needed it the same day. So I did take care of that. But as far as, you know, just a camper seeing the sign on the highway and say, hey, here's a camping spotless, then there's no place for them to get ahold of anyone, there's nothing that tells them who to contact to come and pay their fee or to get a restroom unlocked. So many times Paul and I have driven by, or Joe and Penny have driven by, Mike Askin drives by, or April on her golf cart and, and sees people there, and then, then of course we're all notifying everyone. But I would like to see some kind of a resolution. I don't care, if you don't want us to have a key, I understand.
PK, didn't you sign one out last summer, when we had that trouble before?
I signed one out for Kyle to lay the block in there and then I turned it back in.
Oh, I thought you've got one before, because we talked about this before and then maybe we didn't follow it through?
Yeah.
I think it only makes sense that they do.
It's silly not to. And, and I fully understand the liability of it and the bonding issue with the collecting of the money, I, I get that. And, and I'm not trying to ruffle feathers, but it just doesn't make good sense.
Diana, you guys are already bonded under the blanket policy as park board, because we're fundraisers.
So then that will be the issue then, okay.
You're not taking, you're taking money or you're just-
They're just taking camping money.
Yeah, we would register them and-
But Penny doesn't.
I think, I think the other thing, they have to watch that video.
They have.
Okay.
We've watched the video.
Okay, you have to watch the video.
They've signed their papers.
It's the whole thing, they just get very picky about, you know, making out receipts and making sure those things get taken in and-
So like now Penny gets checks in the mail, so she brings them up, we receive them in the town receipt book, like from Penny Park Board. So that'd be the same thing.
It's the website.
Are you gonna leave, yeah, they can pay online, but a lot of people don't know that either. It happens when people come through town, you know, they stop to get a bite to eat and they say, oh, there's camping down there.
Yes, we need that.
They after hours, when they just show up.
Right, that's, and that's the biggest issue, is they just show up and they don't know who to contact. Anyway, I'd like to see some kind of a resolution to this and-
So would you put a sign up there somewhere that said, call the after-hours number and then whoever's on call could get ahold of somebody on the park board or?
That's if you were, would that work, Brad?
You probably wouldn't want to put your personal cell phone on there.
I mean, I could quote you a sign that would have all that information on it, like we've done on the other.
I see, could you?
I didn't put the website on, the link to the website.
Yeah, they could pay it that way, but then-
Code on there to bring up the website to pay.
We've got an information sign down there, but it's, the plexiglass-
Will not stay.
It will not stay on, it, the river just, the wind off the river just blows it off there all the time, so we need to-
Well, we could do a metal sign that had all your information, anything that you, you know, we could quote that.
That would be awesome.
You just have to let me know what you want on it.
Alright, well, we'll get with Kathy and John and we'll make sure that we all do it right. And Penny has taken care of a lot of it, you know, through the past years, but if we could do that, that would just be awesome.
So then who would have the key, you guys would have the key or everyone, all of?
We would probably, I mean honestly, we'd probably leave it with you and Paul.
Okay.
If you are not gonna be in town, we could kind of make a tree of who, who takes responsibility of the key or-
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, but we could, is there five board members?
Yeah, yeah, there's-
You could sign out five keys and then it'd be your responsibility to sign them out for?
There's four and then we have Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, picking it up right now, you could do a wifi lock and-
You can't guarantee wifi here, because people with Verizon, T-Mobile cannot get someone's here.
That's true.
That's why I love the website I give, but you can't guarantee that.
My traffic cameras are on Verizon actually.
People with Verizon and T-Mobile phones that I work with cannot get them actually.
Any of my delivery guys have no service for me either.
Two days ago and I had not found a spot in Park County, it doesn't work yet.
You gotta go north.
One way.
It used to work at Hill, it used to work on the hill over there in Hillsdale. That's why we changed companies when we moved here, because I had to drive over there to use the phone. I don't know if it still does.
Anyway, we'll get with you then.
We'll figure it out.
And we'll figure it out, okay. And then we'll let you know what kind of a sign we would need and go from there. How's that sound?
That works.
Okay, thank you.
To make it easier, at least guys will come in and just unlock the restroom.
It makes no sense, but yeah, it just doesn't make any sense. Okay, then the other thing that I had, we've got a whole raft of things, but I'm not gonna bring everything up. The basketball court. Do we have any idea when the construction is gonna begin and when the basketball court will be torn up and when we need to rebuild another one? Because in my mind, that is one, one amenity we do not, it needs built before the other one's torn up, in, in my mind. And I know we've already been given an estimate from Kyle Shannon of what he would charge, but we have now other, other places we know that we can get someone to do it. So I just wanna ask you please to make sure there is a plan in place to replace that basketball court before that other one is ever torn up. Because there's gonna be some upset people if we don't, don't do that. Because the word's already out now that this is gonna happen. And I know that we could prevent a lot of hate and discontent if we be, if we prepare ahead of time. So just please be thinking about that and let's try to be proactive instead of reactive, because it'll, it'll create a lot less problems, I think.
Mischiefs go wrong and they don't have anywhere to go to play.
Do you feel like that's true?
I do.
I do.
I, I-
This doesn't tell us when the court would be affected, but the most recent update we gave to IEDM shows construction starting March 1.
March 1, okay, that's more than we knew.
That's assuming our contractor can hear us.
Okay, well, that's more than we knew. 2025, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, we submitted an update a couple months ago to IEDM, we have to quarterly updates to Dustin's. And now, I wish we would ask him when he was here, because I, you know, he may know more now about, I mean, I assume the contractor getting a notice to proceed in December. But it may be that they have to, you know, he just knows that it's not really gonna start until the weather warms up or they have to order stuff that they have to wait on before they can really hit the ground, because a lot of that equipment's specialized for something, so it's a question for him better than me. If somebody wanted, I don't know if anybody's coming to the pre-construction thing, it might be a thing to ask her in pre-construction about, you know, what's your timeline for, if you got this, when do you think you guys might get started? And I don't know, you know, if they start tearing up the basketball court on day one or that's day-
Yeah.
It's 57.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. I just don't want us to be sitting here saying, oh, gosh, they tore up the basketball court, now what are we gonna do? You know, I feel like we need a plan right away to figure this out, so we can take care of our folks. Did I leave anything out Cindy? We have other things, but I'm not gonna bring them up tonight and I'll have more information later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brad?
John, you got all my info, we discussed this afternoon, so.
Scott?
Six runs for the most, ninety-seven for the year. So pranks in the park coming up, so we'll be part of that.
Thank you.
And the parade this weekend, so.
Park County's currently in burn ban.
Yeah, it's in burn ban, so.
I thought.
I think it's posted all over Facebook and websites and everything else, so. At least till the next rainfall, hopefully.
Hopefully it's soon.
Yeah. Oh, I have no opinion. Thanks, kid.
John?
Well, we'll start with the utility side. No new quotes, all of our equipment is operational. Personnel wise, Briar's off until mid-October best case scenario. Cody's on vacation now through next week, so we're a two-man crew. So if you get any questions about what's going on, we just got two guys.
Wow.
Yeah, there's a lot to do too, it's overwhelming. Very overwhelming.
I'm meeting with Mike Novak on the 26th at 11:00 AM in regard, regards to the lead service line inventory. Some questions have come up and he's gonna sort through that, so. If you haven't noticed or nobody's mentioned, well number one in the bulk filled building has been roofed and painted, looks a lot better.
Yes, it does.
You have the stuff to do, the other one, we just haven't got to it, so. Brad was able to find a place to rent the tap for Nathan Gill's Water Service for eighty dollars, so instead of buying one, we can rent one. We're shooting for late September on the install there, I think Nathan's clear, like he understands.
Yeah, he texted me the other day, so he's aware of it.
And me and Brad talked today, probably one of the things that we need to answer on or need to talk about the most is this sewer lateral ordinance for the Scott fam, the Scott family is where it comes into play, but-
Two households are gonna work on an ordinance, something be set in stone?
Yeah. Is I supposed to do that? Okay.
You were gonna start working on it.
I totally forgot that.
I don't understand everything, I'll be the first to admit, but it doesn't make sense to me that we're gonna run two sewer lines parallel that are un-metered essentially, because sewer's not metered, so.
So, while you're both here, because I think there's confusion on, when somebody comes in and they're gonna have a separate residence, is it as long as they have a separate water line, but you're saying you should be able to tap into the same sewer line as long as they're getting metered water and charged?
That's my interpretation.
Because I think there's confusion as to we're saying, you gotta pay a tap fee? So they have to have their own separate line, that's what we were talking about last night.
I think we have, we probably need to talk about it, because my, my concern that I brought up, as I've seen it happen half a dozen times, is people did something like that and then those residences that were owned by the same family or, you know, owned by the same people, twenty years from now they're not. And their water line or their sewer line is connected to the next door neighbor's house and now when something goes wrong with it, it's-
Who's liable?
Who's liable or who's paying the bill and, and, and so that's what concerns me, John. You know, it probably won't affect me.
We've had that once already, with the pizza place and-
Yeah, it, it becomes an issue when people share services, they're related now, I know.
But I think there's somehow, we're, according to the mapping, just south of Scott's. I don't know that people live right next to them, but Daniel Gregg and the house north of him, they are connected and they run across-
On separate property.
Yeah, Victoria, yeah.
On their, on separate property?
The other bottles come out and then they meet in the alley and then they run, they both run across the road.
That's where it's getting confused, I think, but like in this case, Becky wanted separate lines because in the future she may sell part of that off or rent it out? So is that where it might be iffy, is what you're saying?
Well, yeah, I, I, yeah, that's my, that's the concern is, I know it's more efficient, I agree it's more efficient.
Well, cheaper for the homeowners, and it's not only, it's cheaper for us, because let's be real, our tap fee's not gonna cover our cost to install it, so. That was just something to, you know.
I don't care as long as it gets laid out in stone, because we've been told to tell them one thing and then-
And we have an ordinance about gas, but-
Because I don't care one way or the other, I just wanna-
But what we talked about, John, was, you know, if it's, if it's somebody just wants to run, put a, put a sink or a toilet or something in their garage, that's part of, you know, next to the house, that's, that doesn't require a separate tap necessarily, because the odds of that house ever being sold without, the garage is always gonna go with the house.
I don't know, me and Brad talked today, I don't know how you would sell off, I mean, it's puzzle pieced in there. It would be an interesting-
I don't care, I just wanna know what we need to tell them when they come.
I don't care. I just wanna know what we need to tell them when they come in or they call.
But it's metered off the water, so.
They don't have, it doesn't have its own water service?
It does.
It does. We just put it in a couple of days ago. So there's two separate waters?
Two separate water meters. So we're gonna have to run two sewer laterals parallel each other to the road to where they could tie in.
I'm not following something though. There's one there already, right?
Yeah, cause it goes to the Scott's house.
Goes to their house.
Run one, do one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, we're gonna have two running parallel from the same property.
Right.
But, but John, that's their responsibility to run it from the house to your.
We just gotta stub it to their property.
Yeah. We gotta tap it to run.
Yeah. But that's theirs to get to it.
Yeah, technically they would be bringing two sewer lines to our pit.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
She has, I was, we did talk about this at the last meeting and, and I, I forgot about, obviously, uh, writing up something, so. I apologize.
Well, and I, I would rather those two be here too because.
Yeah, that's true.
He knows that side of it, but.
Maybe we can talk about it a little while.
Just need to get something in writing so we can go forward.
Have something for you. October third means it's gonna be a barn burn.
That's fair. We're gonna miss it.
So. We're ready to tap that sewer though, right? Like is that, has she paid that?
That's the only thing that's left. She don't care either way.
So she don't care either way. So you're just wanting to tap into the existing line there?
Paulette would be doing that.
We wouldn't do nothing.
If that's the case, would we refund her tap fee or is it still a tap fee?
That's up to you guys. She says she didn't care.
But she said she wanted everything separate, did she not?
She went back and forth.
She told Tasha that and she told myself that.
Okay.
Telling them kind of different.
Well, cause what I got from him a while back when we chatted that they wanted her to live there, the daughter, but take care of everything on her own. So my thought was she wanted it. And then when you said that's how she wanted it.
I think that's how she wanted it.
It's been.
But now it's becoming.
Talking to her like, why would you do that when you could just tap into it?
Right.
And that will be all on them.
Yes.
So you're.
Yeah, but we need, we need to make a decision so that moving forward is the same per situation if somebody else puts a tiny home on the property.
So I guess.
That's what we need.
Where I think that we're at is we either need to tap the the main coming through there and stub to her and make her connect to it. Or tell her that we're done and let Paulette connect to the existing line she has already going to.
Can that be the homeowner's decision?
Not currently, I don't think, right? Like they. I don't know.
I mean, I'm saying going forward, could it be the homeowner's decision? Okay.
But then going forward, say that was my place and my kids don't wanna live there anymore and I wanna rent it or sell that, which I don't know if you'd sell that based off of the logistics.
About putting in the ordinance, it would be the landlord's decision.
I don't know if I'd want it on my bill.
But then how do you separate the same, how do you separate that bill if there was different?
There's a separate water meter.
So you're gonna have a separate meter anyway.
Yeah. So you're gonna be charged by the water usage on that meter.
On that meter and then the house would be on that meter.
Or it should be no billing issue. It's just a matter of where that's.
Responsibility if something.
Yeah.
So that you need a decision whether to let them tap into the existing and refund their tap fee that they paid or do they owe the tap fee? Or they're still tapping in, right?
Basically, yeah.
But they're tapping into their own.
Oh, but they're doing it their, but they're doing it theirself.
To their own line on their own side of their own property.
So no, that shouldn't, yeah, that should be there. It should be on them. They shouldn't have a tap fee, I wouldn't think. So for now, refund their sewer tap fee?
If they agree to, to tie them together.
If they agree, but we probably need something in writing stating.
That they agree with. And if she still wants it separate, then we keep the tap fee. We make a second sewer line.
Yeah.
How are you doing the trailer parks? Do they, does each trailer, they're just south of us?
So there's, you know, there's.
Do they have their own separate meter or one to the pit or are they all tied together?
They're probably all tied together. Apartments and stuff like that.
Huge pits in the front of it and they had to run their own lines from each.
Right. They still tap into it, but are all trailers connected on that? There are another connected on the pit, but are they connected on the drain line coming in?
Probably.
I don't know that.
Best to be.
I don't know though. I mean, that'd be no different than the trailer park if there's two taps going into it.
The thing I'd say is.
It's on their behalf. It's not on the town.
Is, that's, like apartments are different because apartments, you know, they all run through the same thing. I just have seen this before where somebody else now owns that, two different owners of the house. And I had a house like that in Clinton. My line ran out to the driveway. The guy next to me, his line ran out to driveway and we had a shared line that went out to the street. Now, I never had any issues. I had my sewer backup. It was on my, it was on my side, but that big main would, would have been messed up. That ran down the alley that we shared. It would, you know, we would have had to, you know. Now, I might, I got along with my neighbors, so we probably can work it out, but if you don't get along, it becomes a problem.
Yeah.
That's my, it's up to, I mean, it's up to you guys. So I'll write up something and we can be flexible and you guys can talk about it the next meeting. I was trying to look and see, but I can't seem to find with the ordinance.
So for this evening, are we gonna? I wanna get this straight. Agree that if they want to tap into the existing, then we refund their sewer tap fee that they pay? And it's up to them to decide?
Yeah.
I think that's fair, but I wanna make sure that we do owe what we're supposed to.
Cause on a trailer park, you can.
Well, if you decide that today.
Have one water meter. And the name of the owner of the trailer park.
If you decide today, two months on the road, you've got the same scenario. We're gonna have to stick to the same thing. Cause they're probably gonna go talk to you, find out what they did.
He's gonna get an ordinance ready. Once you pass that, then that's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah. That's the line of the sand.
Well, I'll play devil's advocate and say that I still think that the, if it's this actual bona fide house, the people living in it should have its own line in and out.
Kind of what the ordinance says.
All fully functioning utensils in that house.
Still don't see tapping things together is gonna just be troubled out of line. Cause you're also doubling the amount of sewage going down.
That's.
One line.
One single line. So you got two, two households doing laundry, using the toilet, taking showers and baths. All feeding into one single line. What's that gonna impact it?
Yeah. So is it on two different lots? The.
That's just one property.
One line, one lot.
One lot.
Unless they divided it.
That's what I doubt it. To the ordinance. Well, it was measured. You got four, what is it? Four eight hundred square feet per residence.
For residents, yeah.
We do cover that part if they measured it.
So in the future, if she wanted to sell that, she could have that divided into its own smaller lot though, correct? If she didn't already.
You could, I don't know, I don't know where it sits and, but you can split lots, yeah.
So technically they could.
I split one just there.
Which is weird. It'd be like right by the garage.
Well, but there's a, there's an entrance door and there's a parking spot.
I mean, that little tiny home, a hundred percent could be.
But if in the ordinance, you could say that if the same owner has them both, you can tie them together. And if it's ever separated by ownership, then you have to have a special line.
Have to split it.
Yep.
So when that would.
Split it now.
Do that.
Yeah.
So why not split it now? It's gonna be hard to enforce that.
Yeah.
Right.
They're on that line. Everybody's gonna forget about it or, oh, by the way, I bought this house. But I got my sewers running, my neighbors' sewers running into my sewer. What's going on?
Right, and there's sewers in town. There's a problem.
Yeah. If, if it don't plug up, they'll never know. There you go. It might go, it only comes up when there's prob. It works great till there's a problem. Then when there's a problem, it can become a problem.
That's profound.
Good philosophy.
So now I'm confused.
I don't know. I think we're undecided still, John.
Okay.
Now.
And I haven't talked to her directly, but the conclusions that I've drawn is Paulette's got involved and there's probably been some costs shared. One solution versus the other and uh, so. That's where the indecision's probably coming from, cause it's gonna probably cost quite a bit more for Paulette to run that.
Yeah, the whole line.
That's just my theory on it, so.
So are you not making a decision on that until the ordinance comes into effect or? Or you can vote on it right now? I think she needs to move along with her place, so I think we probably need to make a decision.
We do. We find out what she wants to do? For sure.
So refund the tap fee pending owner agreeing to tap into existing line?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I think that was Paul, actually Paulette's recommendation to her, right?
It was Paulette and Teddy.
Cause is that an easier solution? Probably. I mean.
Can be less digging.
Yeah, easier for Paulette and us, we're basically done. We don't want to do anything.
Well, and then if they gotta have a separate line to the pit.
Then we're involved.
Yeah, and you, how, what does that involve?
Just dig it around the sewer pit and.
Put the stub.
Putting the stub out, probably a couple forty-five to get it around to her property. We are, I'm reading the ordinance now because we do require inspection and permit fee. Anybody, somebody's hooking up to make sure that they're using the right materials and they're not connecting downspouts and stuff like that. So they're supposed to like keep it open for.
Yeah, we ran into that up on East Street.
Tap into the pit. And then give them the option of how they wanna go by. There's no pay in sewer fees regardless. It's up to them whether they wanna go all the way to the pit or not. They're only going ten, twelve feet off of the pit. So, I mean, at some point you're gonna have to do it if they split the lot anyway, so you either do it now or you do it later. If you do it now, it's fresh on everybody's brains. If you do it ten years down the road, who's gonna remember?
Yeah.
At least it's already paid for and the house can be, that's the house's problem if they sell it. But you're not involved at that point.
And the tap fee's already in hand.
Yep. So whether they tap into it or not, that's up to them. So with the tap fee will be done. And it'll be tapped into. Then you're eliminated and any further issues. But it's only an issue like.
He's probably wrong.
If it's, if they sell the house.
You're not talking, well, right now you're not talking about a family of eight moving in.
Right.
So.
They really great.
You better not. Seriously, I don't want to see them home.
So if you put a bathroom in your garage, we're gonna charge them a tap fee for that garage also. Is that what? That's not what we did when the sewer system was put in because it was not a residential. Okay.
No, it's not, it wouldn't be a separate residential.
Okay.
We're just talking about, somebody's got a house here.
Tiny houses.
Tiny houses coming in, yeah.
And your cousin Sylvia.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, the technicalities on the definition and it's kinda like the camper situation. Oh, we're not living in it, but the air conditioner runs twenty-four hours.
Right, right.
Yeah.
The dog cool.
You can build a house.
So if you call it a garage, it's.
That's my view.
It's just a storage shed with a toilet.
That's what they was doing.
I think it should have a tap fee and I think it should be separated and then we don't have to worry about this in the future when it comes to the tiny homes going on other people's properties.
Another residence.
It's an actual residence. I mean. Cause if not, we're gonna be, it's gonna trickle down and start to become a problem. And then when it is a problem, nobody's gonna be at fault and then then what?
I mean, I think what I'm trying to do mainly now is get them taken care of and then we'll have time to review the ordinance and look at that. Cause I, I don't know how big a hurry she's in.
He's gonna want to move along. They've been trying to get everything moving, haven't they?
Paulette hasn't been, the water, sewer, nothing's been done yet, so I don't know how soon he's gonna get there.
They were there today, so I don't know.
I would say in the next week or two. She's gonna be in there.
I just hate to see us not make some sort of clear definition right now so that it can move forward instead of them not being able to move forward because they're still waiting on clarification.
Yeah. So we could, if we go ahead and say, okay, if they agree to it, they can use the same line. But once the ordinance, whatever the ordinance says, what it ends up at that time, that's line and sand and that's the way you do business. Makes sense?
I don't know. How many's on the pit now?
I believe it's just. I think it's just one. Scott's.
Okay.
I think it's just one coupon stuck in that pit.
I'm gonna say, I kinda feel like Shauna that it needs to be a separate line out there. That's my gut.
He's already spoke, so that's three of you.
Yeah, that's what I feel too.
Okay.
And I would think we're, we're, we don't object to that. We just.
You just wanna clarification of what we need to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, my thought is if we're gonna change the ordinance anyways, then we should, I mean, for the long run, for the future, if more tiny homes come on people's properties, we should just have it set in stone if we're discussing it today. And make the decision on how we wanna move forward from this day forward and then, I mean, because they're gonna be coming more and more.
I think so.
I just, I, I see this becoming a trend more and it has over the couple of years.
You know, it's.
We just need to solidify and we just put the line there now and.
Because we don't, we don't.
Families are living together. Families are coming back together and things, kids are staying longer or they're building on that property or they're.
Well, let's just, somebody make a motion on, but you think, and we didn't have a vote on it and and it'll, it'll be there.
I just make a motion that I think if you have a tiny home on a property, you should have the separate lines.
I second that.
Or a second residence.
Or a second residence or, yeah.
All in favor of that?
Did you second? Pretty much what the ordinance says.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
If I were writing an ordinance, which I might get to, um, would you want this to be for all your utilities? Or?
I would think so because, yeah, I mean.
I figure, I just.
Yeah, I, I think it should be.
What about internet?
So can you clarify?
We're not balking.
My thing is because eventually whether it's not a family member, if they want to rent that space out, it should all be separated. This house and this house, whether it's five-bedroom house or a one-bedroom studio tiny, like resident. I think it should have its own separate.
Also stipulate if someone wants a separate meter on their garage or a different out meeting building, is that a separate tap fee? Cause we run into surprises there too.
They, they, you know.
They want their own meter, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we could spell that.
If we just get that in there too.
Okay. Moving on?
We're clear.
I hope I don't have anything else. We got, they got flagpoles painted at the library. I don't know if anybody's noticed. Kathy and I were working on an update for the sign at the cemetery, uh, and I didn't actually touch base with her today.
Well, I got an email into that lady gave me.
Fred Huber?
Yes, I'm waiting on a response and you also want me to mention the Aztec Park sign.
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
You don't have to worry about that. But the chapel sign, is the chapel sign, uh, needing attention again?
Yeah.
Isn't it needing, and he's the one that did that too.
Actually, the sign at the road needs attention too, I noticed.
Okay.
It's getting faded and.
So hopefully, he'll get back with me in a couple of days and we'll go from there.
Okay. Well, when I contact him about the Aztec Park sign, I'll say, hey, they're waiting on you to respond about the others.
Well, I was late getting him an email sent, so.
Okay. Well, I won't.
Probably tomorrow then.
And he's trying to go out of business.
Oh, yeah. Oh, then I might not get a response.
We're not gonna let him.
The guys have put in two new services, uh, two of them being electrical, one was electric, or, one was just electrical, one was electric and water, going to be sewer, it sounds like. We're trying to work in new foundations in, in the cemetery and the fall cleanup, uh, to avoid pouring fifteen or twenty next spring if we can. Would like to trim some more trees for winter. I drove around today looking at some intersections. We got a little bit of work to do there. I don't think it's any secret here, but the crews are gonna start to focus on the downtown area prior to the festival. Get everything cleaned up and looking good. If we can get more than two. Outside of that, library roof is complete on the exterior. Brad McRoy has started inside. Uh, Brad said that he has noticed some dust in the library since they've been working in there. I don't think she showed up yet, so you're welcome. That could be, that could be challenging, drive all dust in a library, but. I was gonna ask her her opinion, which is not. I think that's all I have for utilities unless anybody has any questions. Did I miss anything, Brad? Police, I didn't have time to sort out like calls for service versus all calls, which would include traffic stops. So from nine-one to nine-nineteen, we had seventy-three calls for service. That includes traffic stops, which resulted in two felony arrests, seven misdemeanor arrests, fourteen citations and twenty warnings. Darian has had some hours available, which has freed me up to do some ordinance stuff. We removed two vehicles from the stone property at one seventy-one North D Alley. Um, so the only vehicle left there is the one that she personally drives. I stopped again in three thirty-six East Wilkerson Street, the camper there, Wilkerson and Madison. And.
They don't live there.
Yeah, they're, you know, we're, we're there, but I told them that we weren't gonna split hairs and that if they're not willing to work with me, then we'll just fine them a hundred dollars a day and. I mean, it is what it is. I don't want to be a jerk about it, but when the neighbors call and complain that they're going in and out of there, it's. One ninety-six North Jefferson, there's a vehicle there that's gonna be taken care of. Thirteen seventy-four North Jefferson, camper on the property, appeared to be used as a living space. It's up on jacks or blocks, has an air conditioner running. Couldn't get any contact at the door, but I did leave a note. My expectations, I'll follow up on that. I still need to get with Scott on the Reader House. And then thirty-four North Jefferson Street, we've, in the last week, there's been ten dogs surrendered to Paul's and Claus, which, that's a step in the right direction there. Outside of that, uh, we'll be at the Homecoming Parade this Saturday and then the five K on the twenty-eighth. Business as usual. Thanks for your support. That's it.
Thank you.
Correct?
Uh, I was, I missed out on the, uh, fall cleanup because I was working my part-time job.
I know they filled one dumpster.
I could see trash in both dumpsters for my office. There was something.
Bodie and my sister-in-law went around to some places in the South End that had some couches in the yard and got permission to haul them up here.
Nice.
So they hauled four that weren't theirs. That's how many yards.
That's all I got.
Well, I'm good.
I'm good.
Kathy?
No.
I hate to slow your momentum, but did I mention anything last month about the solar farm in Vermillion County? Asking questions about an easement?
No.
I, I talked to Tasha.
Because, yeah, she had that phone call.
We got an email from, there, there's a new solar farm going in partly on Vermillion Rise and partly south of Vermillion Rise. It's on both. And the company that's doing that's called Orden or, yeah, it's Orden. And I know of it because we, I was involved in the negotiations over in, you know, over in Vermillion County. So there was an email sent and they are, there's a substation located, so, there's one on the rise, they're not connected to that one. There's a substation owned by Empa actually, that's, um, outside the rise. Um, if you took, uh, I think it's old sixty-three, right, the cut-off road, and you took it all the way up where it comes out there. I think it's, it's right around there where it comes back on the highway. There's a substation there. It says Empa owns the ground, so I assume it's Empa's substation, but. Um, any rate, they're connecting to that substation. That's part of the reason they want to be there, there's a substation right there they can run their power over to. And they were asking, they said, we've, we've got the, they sent a survey and the title work, and there's an easement from nineteen forty where the town of Monazuma got an easement across the same property for an electric easement. So I was at the courthouse this week for something else and I looked up, and I'd seen these before and I always wondered, why does Monazuma have all these easements in Park, or in Vermillion County? So I looked up and, and they're pretty vague, but there were a bunch of them in nineteen forty, in, in the forties. And does anybody have any idea why, did you, I, I, the only thing I was, I was, my, my guess is that at some point, either you were running power over there or you were getting, pulling power from there.
Monazuma supplied the power and water to Hillsdale for years.
But you're saying that's up by the.
This is up by the rise.
Like the ammunition plant?
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
It was, these easements were put in in forty, which would have been actually before the plant was there.
There's some of Nathan Gill's stuff, there's some really old maps out there that have.
Well, I, I, I just, and then I, there was, there was some, there was also some in Hillsdale from the seventies, I found. That are still there. I don't know what they were for either, if you, um, yeah.
The one time they went through and drilled, uh, Hillsdale and, uh, Highland, they drilled and then pumped that acid into the ground to eat the bedrock out and stored, they store gas under it, natural gas. Pen and, yeah, bed and stuff, yeah, because my, my place I lived up there, we did that.
Well, it, it, they, it, it's not a big deal. They need a agreement with us that says they can cross our easement with their lines. I said, well, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I'm just more curious as to what the heck we have easements for. Clear over, you know, it's not that.
Charge them a tap fee.
I'm surprised, honestly. I'm surprised it hadn't come up before, um, because, um, the easements are, as the surveyor said there, they just say, we grant you an easement across our property. Well, where? And, you know, I just, I, I, I knew I'd be coming this evening, so I wanted to ask the collective wisdom of the crowd um, if anybody had any idea, um, because it's.
They're gonna go this one in before our time.
You're the oldest.
Yeah, you're right behind me, but, yeah, that'd be before us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I had to ask you about.
I did have one more thing for Diana. Did you check on the helicopter pad for the basketball court?
Uh, no, I, Paul and I did discuss it and he felt like it was probably gonna be two separate.
Just, I had just thought of it.
But thank you for reminding me.
You did build the pad big enough for the chopper, then the basketball goals is gonna be on the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it works for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good thought.
Unless we could put the, the heel pad at one end and then the basketball court at the other. But it's a great, I love the idea.
Anything else, buddy?
Nope, I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you.